Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of August 5th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Francini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. McGraw. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick. Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Ms. Hubick from the meeting tonight. She is far away with no reception. And it's, I mean, and a good thing.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Young to excuse Ms. Hubick. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna go into executive session, so the council will now enter an executive session regarding potential real estate transaction per RCW 423110. The length of the executive session will be 15 minutes, after which council will return to council chambers and resume our regular meeting. No action will be taken as part of this executive session. So be back at 6:17 unless we have to extend the time, and I'll come back and announce that. 6:17, thank you.[98.51]
Okay, the council has returned from its executive session and will now re-enter a regular open meeting. And move on to item number four, which is announcements and committee reports. Couple of quick announcements from me. I want to thank our fiber customers. We had a little outage over the weekend, a very significant outage actually. But thanks for the patience of a number of customers out of the west end. Ms. Hsu, we'll talk about it later on. But also our dedicated staff to get the west end fiber up and running after this accidental outage was caused by a cut line, particularly Joe and Dawson and the team. They began the response at 10 o'clock on Friday morning and worked through till 6:00 a.m. Saturday and worked all night through. Took a little break and came back at 10 or 11 to complete the restoration. So again, Ms. Hsu will talk a little bit more when we get to the council's fiber report. Reminder, National Night Out is tomorrow, Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Storvik Park. Community is invited to a free, fun-filled evening, again at Storvik Park with music, food, and activities for all ages. Also, Washington State Ferry Open House. Washington State Ferry is hosting an online open house to share information and gather feedback on proposed changes to the Anacortes San Juan Island sailing schedule. Open House will be online through Friday, August 23rd, and you can get that link on our webpage. And then finally, a reminder, tomorrow is primary election day, August 6th, and that is until 8:00 p.m. Tomorrow, you can drop your ballots off at the Anacortes Public Library, so behind the library near the Drive-Up Book Drop, and our Skyline Beach Club on Sands Way. So again, it's my opinion, your civic duty to vote, and then my opinion will be it's even better if you're an educated voter, but it is your civic duty to vote. Okay, on to for a fiber committee report, and I'll let Ms. Hsu give an update to council and the public on our fiber outage over the weekend. Ms. Hsu.
Mayor, council members, the audience, I appreciate the opportunity to just give a quick update on the issue that occurred last Friday. So, we had a contractor who cut through a line at 9:25 on Friday morning, and by 9:30 we had staff from fiber, water, and the engineering departments all onsite mobilizing to resolve the issue. We had about 950 customers that were impacted by this. It's very difficult because access to Anacortes Fiber Internet really prides itself on being fast, reliable, lower-priced, and locally-run. And the reliability was the concern that we had. So, we started that work on August 2nd, Friday at 9:30 in the morning, called in staff that were scheduled day off, and then they worked a significant amount of time. So between, we had two employees that put in 60 hours during that timeframe, but other staff with a total of 88 hours, just kind of working through. I thought it'd be important to know just what we had to do. So, we had 650 feet of 144 account fiber that had to be pulled and spliced. We had one 750-foot MST that we had to replace, one 500-foot MST that had to be replaced, and that resulted in 288 slices. So, we worked hard to try and get information out. If you went to the city's website, any page on the city's website did provide regular updates as where we were with that process. And I also put information on the city's fiber Facebook page and a couple other community groups just to get information out. We wanted them, the community, to be aware that we were working diligently on getting it repaired, but it wasn't going to be a quick repair, and I wasn't able to provide an ETA of when the service was going to be replaced. So, I just appreciate the customers for their willingness to work with us, and we've been working, everybody was back in service, and the majority of people were back in service on Saturday night, and then the restoration was complete at 8:18 on the 3rd. And then staff were back working on Sunday as well, just working through some of those details. So I just wanted to give you some general information, because I know this is information that goes, you know, that the public will hear this as well, and let you know that we're really dedicated to our purpose of providing fast and reliable, low-price, and locally-run service. So, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Thank you. Ms. Hsu, just, I totally understand that many people may not know this about me, but, you know, I work for one of the, you know, big companies, Bell Companies at one point, and, you know, my job was to fiber and to bridge in that together as they were first rolling out part of that for them. And, you know, it is a difficult thing, and those things do happen. And what I really appreciate about this learning experience for us as a city is that it's part of the course of doing business, and the good thing is that you were able, and the team was able to pull it back together, and because people in the community are really championing what we are offering, and I think it's a wonderful thing. So, you know, I hate that it happened, but it does happen in the course of business, and we were able to turn it around. So, I applaud that effort by everybody involved.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Walton.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hsu. So, I'm just curious, I didn't quite catch how it happened to begin with.
And we had a contractor then that hit our fiber line.
One of our contractors?
No. So, but we are doing an investigation to see if there's any, any way that we can then get this resolved, so.
Sure. So, is this like an overground thing that happened, or an underground thing?
It was underground.
An underground thing, someone essentially, I'm just, I'm just trying to, just in a practical sense, understand what happened.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be dodgy in the responses either, just we have a process where we're doing a full investigation on our end to see if there's any restitution or anything that can occur, and so it wasn't something that was caused by the fiber department. It was caused externally, and we just had to respond to that.
Sure, and that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, but not quite. So, I just want to know, like, physically, that is helpful information, but like physically, how did that happen? Like, so a contractor was doing what, like, and unearthed this fire, or is this something that we're vulnerable to in the future in a similar situation? I just want to know, like, the physical part of how it happened.
I'd like to hold off on answering that until we get a little bit further along in the investigation. I do know how that happened, but we're looking at the whole system of underground locates and different things, so.
And just because responsibility could potentially lead to legal responsibility as well, and that's why we're being very careful about answering that question.
Yeah, I understand.
I know we want to know all the, we'll get there.
I'm not looking for the who, I'm looking for the how, and I don't think that that's something that can't be divulged at some time in the future, certainly, because, you know, how to prevent it and that kind of thing.
The fiber line, the fiber line was cut by a contractor.
Right, but I still at some point want to know how it happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So, just so that I understand, it sounds like there's kind of an investigation happening, and then whatever the causes are determined, we will find out who's going to pay for it, basically, because I'm assuming that there's a lot of cost involved replacing. And I don't need to get into details, but if that's correct, how I understand it, we're going to do an investigation, and then we'll, we'll know kind of what's going to happen.
We're evaluating what our options are in terms of thinking about restitution for time and materials, yes.
Okay, and then also, one of the, just so that I'm, I understand, so obviously, this has never happened before, right? This is brand new, and I'm sure, like, you know, like PSE, they're able to put those things out there real quick. Everything will be back on in 25 minutes or whatever it is. This is obviously new for us, but I'm guessing that, like, we'll know better kind of next time should this unfortunate thing happen again. And then, how, so we put something up online, do we send out, like, an email, or is there, what's our, is that, we just put something online? I did see things in the Facebook groups, which is awesome, but there's a lot of people that aren't on Facebook too, so I'm just curious if there's any way that we notify our individual customers, or if that's being looked at at all.
We're currently evaluating different systems that can do texts out to customers when there is an outage, and so we've been evaluating that. We're also looking at that as part of our EE, or excuse me, ERP replacement project as well, because some of the systems have that in place as well.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Certainly appreciate the roles fiber staff played in resolving the outage, working all that hours, and I'm glad that it happened over the weekend, but then saw them in my neighborhood running around this morning. So, good work on behalf of staff for resolving the problem. In terms of communication, I do think that some estimated time to repair would have been very helpful to people, and it is, it was a big deal to a lot of people, certainly heard from a lot of people who were concerned about it, and concerned about it because they don't, they may complain about their service from other providers, but they don't usually have that lengthy of an outage. I think there's also further conversation that we can have in our fiber committee meetings about geographic redundancy of the trunk line that goes out to the west end and those kinds of things to, we've talked a lot about redundancy in our systems, but that's one single point of failure and something that maybe we should invest in to create that redundancy. But the communication piece, while good, because there was a lot of communication, I think certainly could be further improved along the lines of how Mr. Fantini suggests, and our ERP system may not be online for another couple of years. We probably need a stopgap in the meantime. Methods, but also content of the communication. I think it would have also been useful to be able to tell customers why the outage occurred, which is also similar to what PSE does for an outage. a power line. And that is, it may not be an obvious piece of information that customers need, but they are very interested, and I think deserve it because they are our public. So more to do in this area, but certainly good work in getting it back up and running again.
Thank you.
All right. Any more from the fiber committee? Okay. All right. Next up is the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
The, we, the last meeting of HACs was canceled.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Finance Committee?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. So we had a finance committee meeting on July 25th, so it was a little while ago. And we went over, the main discussion was our solid waste, and the fact that tipping fees county, the county is going to be charging us more, and how do we pass that on in a timeline, in a timeframe, and the amount that makes the most sense for our customers. So we did some discussion about that, also looking at our reserves for solid waste and our cash reserves, and then, you know, your cash reserves in relation to best practices for the amount equivalent to approximately two months of operating costs. So we were, we've been declining somewhat in their solid waste reserves, but we're about 19% cash reserves, which is pretty close to two months of operating costs, so that's good. But the auditors had said that it was a bit light at our last audit that we had this last year, I believe. So what we discussed, and I think will be brought to council in the near term, is that we will need to do the adjustment to address the increase in tipping fees sooner than later, and probably do that, the full adjustment in that first year, which I think is going to be coming up this fall. So we should have something to counsel for a further discussion and a more thorough explanation of that in the near future. We also discussed the enterprise resource planning, which is our current version is Eden, which is phasing out, I think in the next two years, that we have, we had 10 responses to that RFP, request for proposals. It's been narrowed down, and we're looking at, I believe, four at this point. We've had each, each finalist has done about a two-day presentation at the city with a number of staff members who directly interact with Eden, and then also directors who are working with that. So that should come, continue to be narrowed down and get some further discussion at a council meeting in the near future. Then the last thing we talked about somewhat is our sales tax. So we got it for the month, so it's for July, which ultimately means the month of May is sales, because it's delayed a couple months, was, I believe, slightly down over the previous year, but still within our expectations. And that was it.
All right, thank you. Next up is, any questions on the finance report? Economic Development Committee?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee met on the 26th, and there was, of course, Mr. McDougal, myself, Ms. Hubig, the staff, the director, and we had invited five stakeholders. So the port came, and representation by Ms. Kathy Pettis, HF Sinclair, the chamber, the hospital, and the school district had an emergency that morning, so they will be at the next meeting that we have. And the whole purpose was to just bring everybody up to date as to where we are in this process, that we've entered into a contract with Western Washington University to begin our look into Anacortes and, you know, what's really happening, what we think are happening, and then also how, you know, just getting a gauge of the community and the things that are important to us. We've been working on this for quite a while, and, but the good news is that we have begun our process of stakeholders and informing the stakeholders and beginning that process. The goal, end goal is to understand the challenges, the successes, those things that are right about our city, and then those things that people, you know, have suggestions for, or how we might better become the city we want to become. And again, as always, the whole reason for the Economic Development Committee's formation is really all about looking at Anacortes and our place and how we fit into the machinery of not only the county, but beginning to look at what we want here, and then being able to go after that, whether that means in a roundtable after that. And so part of that process is really about partnering and working with, you know, Western Washington University, as well as the E-DAS, but Western Washington University giving us access to a stellar group of talented people that can look at where we are and the things that we are confronting, you know, economically as a city, and where we want to go. So it really bodes well for us, and so what we wanted to do was just inform some stakeholders in this small group, and then we have another group coming up that we will have, and then we'll open it up. And part of the things that we were asking them is what their thoughts were about, you know, the successes of what they love about, even from a corporate standpoint, or their individual business standpoint, about our city, where are the challenges? And then, you know, what would they like to see, what they think is good, right, fair, just? And so, you know, it's amazing what you would get out of that. I'm not sure how many cards we got out of that, John, but, and I'm sure you're still compiling, but, you know, the good news is sometimes you can't think of everything, and when you ask the people that are directly involved in what's taking place, it's amazing what you would come up with. So it, we're well on our way, we have another meeting coming up, and it's, again, some other key stakeholders, and then we'll open it up from there to figure out what survey we want, what questions we want to ask. And through that window, it'll help us compile, you know, what are the challenges? One of the things that did come out of that meeting that was really drove home for me is that three of the biggest employers that we have here in our area, three of them, said that their employee's challenge is childcare. Now, of course, Ms. Christine Cleland McGrath has been a champion of that for a long, 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 long time. But it was amazing that the hospitals still have the same challenge too for their employees, the refineries still have some of the same challenges for their employees, because their employees have to leave here, or drop the kids off someplace where they can have space, and then come here, and then go back. So, you know, when we looked at those things, I just think that as a committee, when we began to look at those things, it'll help us figure out where we need to focus some of our effort, and are there policies, or are there things that we can do as a roundtable of brilliant minds, figure out how we can help it? So that is the purpose. And as things continue to evolve and come forward, we will inform you and keep you abreast, and then eventually, you will receive a survey of sorts, and your input would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Economic Development Committee? All right, any other announcements or committee reports that I might have missed? Okay, we'll move on to item five. Item five is public comment, this opportunity to address the council, anything that's not on our agenda. We do have a public hearing on the Capital Facilities Plan, and ordinance on the budget amendment, and also wastewater treatment plan outfall later on. But if you want to talk to council about anything else, that would be a good time. Okay, and I don't have anybody signed up either. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and it's a big one, so I know we got that to council as soon as we could, items six A through I. Mr. Walters?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Mr. McDougal to approve consent agenda items A through I. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we're going to go on to item seven, and this is a public hearing on the 2024 to 2029 Capital Facilities Plan Amendment. So again, 2024 to 2029, not to be confused with 2025, it'll be coming up soon enough. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. The Capital Facilities Plan for 2024 through 2029, we have a project in the water utility that we would like to accelerate it. Have a couple of slides here, and I want to point out that this ordinance, ordinance 4084, it's listed under other business, but this ordinance is what would be amending the CFP. We are required to have a public hearing on the CFP amendment, along with the two-week comment period, which concluded last Friday. But it's a very simple amendment we're asking for. The project is called Replace Water Treatment Plant Discharge Meters. We initially had it scheduled to be worked in fiscal year 2027 and 2028, and we would just like to accelerate that to the current timeframe, fiscal year 2024, $460,000, and then finishing it out next year, $795,000. So this project, I'll put a little bit of background in here. So this, the water line associated with this project actually developed a leak, it was a quite significant leak, dug out a little bit of a hole there, I believe in the parking area around the water treatment plant. But that's what necessitated the acceleration of this project. This project has also become FEMA eligible, or eligible for FEMA replacement, so it won't affect the existing water rates. We'll be able to get reimbursement through that FEMA process. Sorry, let's go back here. As I said, we have some requirements in the Anacortes Municipal Code, as well as the WAC that drives the CFP. We've met those requirements, except for the public hearing now.
And that's, that's my cue. Okay, any member of the public wish to comment on this amendment to the Capital Facilities Plan? All right, seeing no one approaching, I will close the public hearing on the Capital Facilities Plan Amendment, and then jump to item 8A, which, back to Mr. Hoagland.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So I have some of the background information and the wherashes under this ordinance, but the Capital Facilities Plan, when amended, has to be done in conjunction with an amendment to the operating budget, and that's why we have both of those ordinance listed back-to-back. Ordinance 4085 would be amending the operating budget to include that same water treatment plant discharge meter project we were just talking about. The other thing that the operating budget amendment would do if approved, I'm requesting that council reduce the professional services budget in the finance department by $46,000. We've been looking for ways to reduce our expenditure budget, as during the finance report indicated, our revenues are still within, within expectations in certain areas, but our revenues are not increasing year-over-year like we need them to do. There's been a number of indicators in the economy that, and in our, in our own business here in the city, that give me concern about potential future revenues. So I think it's prudent to try and curb those expenditures where possible, so that's why I'm requesting a reduction in, in this budget. So those are the two items. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, and I guess technically, we, I, well, I'd like to open it up for anybody wanting to comment on the budget amendment portion, any members of the public, before I turn both of these ordinances over to council for discussion. All right, not seeing anybody. Okay, council, now you can take them, you know, we'll have to take them separately, but 8A?
Oh, Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. I know, I created a little bit of confusion with these ordinances as well, because I put them on the agenda as discussion items, but I also put the date on them, as of today's date, August 5th. So either way, council would like to handle that. I'm happy to change the date on those ordinances, bring them back on consent next week, or if you want to go ahead and waive the two-read rule and approve those tonight.
Thank you, thank you for that reminder, since it's been two weeks since our last council meeting. So, all right, so council, you, you heard everything?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
How will amending the budget by itself negate the expenditure of the $46,000 for OpenGov?
Yeah, so administratively, that provides some abilities for us to go back to OpenGov, to essentially open up that contract that we have with them. There's language in the contract that directs that the contract could be canceled if budget authority is not granted for the, for the program.
So that really is the underlying action that we would be setting us on a course to approve. We should just be cognizant of that. We would be moving on from OpenGov.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No objection here. I do think that your underlying point, though, is well-taken, that there are other things that we need, we need to be saving money in a variety of areas. We should be looking for more than just this one.
Yeah, absolutely. Can't agree more. Since, for the, for the last few months, at least, we've, we've been talking about that, particularly in the hiring arena, we've been looking at each of those positions as they come up, to see if it makes sense to try and hold those budget positions. For the most part, what we've seen so far are either positions that are funded by, generally by utilities, it wouldn't save us general revenues, or positions that we really don't have the flexibility to, to operate without at this time. But it's a point well-taken. I agree.
Mr. Young?
Thank you. No, I am supportive, you know, I'm one of those that watches the market every day, and, you know, given the market these last two days, it's been alarming for a lot of people. And also, you know, I guess, foreboding the worries that kicks in, you know, around this time and others, for all of the reasons above, and some we don't even understand, but it is what it is. What I appreciate, though, is your conservative viewpoint that you've always applied to the city finances, and, you know, for that, I thank you. And also, you have always spoken about the trend the last times you were coming up before us, and so here we are, and not sure what will end up happening, given, I think it was a four, 500-point drop, or, anyway, but the point is, you know, I agree that conservatively, looking at where we are and figuring out how and what we can save money on would be appreciated, and I think to Mr. Walters' point about looking at other things as well. So, you know, I just wanted to toss that out there, you know, the market has been crazy, and we're not sure, you know, where and when that may end, you know, I guess at some point, you know, sometimes if computers kick in, like it's done before, you know, we've got even bigger mess. But I appreciate the conservative nature of how you operate here within the city. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
I understand the OpenGov one, and that makes sense. I just want to go back to the water treatment plant discharge meters. So I, so the $160,000 expense, that is just for this year, correct? I believe that from- I believe that from my notes when we talked about it on May 9th, yeah, so it's $795 the following year. And then we had, we were expecting to get some money from FEMA, because it's a small enough amount that it's usually pretty rubber stamped. So that $160,000 that we're seeing here from FEMA, is that accurate, that it'll cover the 2024 costs?
Yeah, I spoke with, this came up actually several months, I don't know if everybody on council remembers, but we talked about this at the finance committee several months ago to, to get this out, so they, they could start working on the project before the amendment was actually approved, and that's, at that time, that was still an accurate, accurate quote.
So have we got, have we received confirmation that FEMA will give us that money?
Well, that's, that's my understanding, is, and that's why we're moving forward with this, with these, with these projects in the regional system, where we collect money to pay for those from all of our regional customers, it's, we generally try to collect the majority of those funds before we start that project, so that's why we're, we're going ahead with this now, because it is FEMA-eligible.
Great, and then we will, and that was just, just so everyone remembers, there was a sinkhole during a flood in the, over the dike in 2021, so that's part of the reason, it's not that it'll pay for the whole pro, this whole project, but it'll pay for a, a portion of the project, so it triggered moving it ahead. So we will then program the $795 for the next fiscal, for 2025, and that'll make sense.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yeah, we closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing, was that the public hearing on both the CFP amendment and the budget amendment?
Just the CFP.
Do we need a public hearing on the budget amendment?
No.
Can we waive the two-read rule on both of these ordinances, so that we can proceed to adoption tonight? I guess that's a question for council.
If that is, if that is your desire.
Yeah. No, if there's no objection on that, I move that we waive the two-read rule and approve ordinance 4084 with the CFP amendment.
A motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to waive the two-read rule and adopt ordinance 4084. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciacco, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleothe McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Sorry, this is the budget one we're doing?
CFP.
No, this is CFP amendment.
Okay, because when I'm looking at CFP, I'm seeing ordinance 4066, am I looking at this wrong?
I, I have 4084.
4084.
Okay, yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks, and now 4085, which I won't make Mr. Hoagland explain this one again, but council, over to you all.
Mayor Miller.
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Oh, sorry, so I'm looking at the agenda bill for 8A, and at the top it says ordinance 4084, and then the recommended motion says I move to adopt ordinance 4066, so that was, hence my confusion.
Yeah, Mayor Miller, if I may.
Yes, please.
Apologize, I may have messed up on that agenda bill, so what, what the ordinance is doing is amending the original budget, which was adopted by ordinance 4066, so apologies.
Gotcha, okay, no worries, thanks.
Good, good catch, because we want the agenda bills to be spot-on.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So our next one is 4085, which is the budget amendment, so I move that we waive the two-read rule and adopt 4085.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to waive the two-read rule and adopt ordinance 4085. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleothe McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is item 8C, this is wastewater treatment plant outfall relocation project update, and we're gonna have Mr. Lee, city engineer, present this one, and and everybody's asking, why are you building the outfall on the?
And we'll get to that.
But I know you're gonna get to that.
Getting me mayor and council and those in attendance, so just bring you the latest update for our outfall relocation project, that is currently ongoing, construction is, has started, and it's a very exciting project, but just to give you a fresh review of, of the project, we're putting in a 48-inch out, 48-inch outfall from the wastewater treatment plant, down T Avenue, down Third Street, all the way down U Avenue into the Gwamas Channel Trail, and the project's really divided into two main portions, the marine section, which is where the project's starting, and where most of the work is happening currently, and then the upland portion where the excavating and blasting and restoring the roads will happen. So as far as the marine construction goes, where we're currently at is the 42-inch HDP pipe is being fused, or has been fused, and then they use the MJB property to do that, and that was, the fusing is done, they've moved it into the bay where it's floating, I'll get to that here in a second, and the second part is preparing the final resting location of the pipe in Gwamas Channel Trail, or in Gwamas Channel, and they have to dredge out some soil, get to prepare the site, and then the third part would be just sinking the pipe, and hopefully it doesn't move ever. So this is the, as far as the fusing and anchor installation goes, this is just some good example of what's happened at the MJB property, they took the sticks of pipe, heated them up, pressed them together in a kind of welding, fusing process, and then installed anchors at predetermined locations, and as they assembled the pipe, they pushed it out into the bay where it currently resides, and once the final site is prepared, they will float it around Cap Sandy and align it in its final location and submerge it. Currently, with the work that's happening, is they are dredging at the end of U Avenue to prepare the final location of the pipe, it's a good picture of the two barges that are currently sitting out there, they're dredging in the water, and they are dredging on the shoreline. Some other shots of just what they were doing out there today, working on the shoreline, it's a cool picture of them pulling up some soil, and they load it on the barges, take it off-site, and dispose of it. The only traffic control plan that's currently active is down in the left corner, and we're just not doing through traffic through that section of U Avenue, so the crews have plenty of space to do what they need to do, local residents who need to get through there are accommodated, there's a flagger on duty at all times when work is going on, so that the local residents can get to their houses. Once the site's prepared, the final step of the marine portion, which we hope to do in the next month, is submerging the pipe, and so there's a good shot of the pipes right there, sitting out in the bay, and once they take it around Cap Sandy, they will align it, and the, the middle picture is just a pretty cool picture, diagram, of how they plan on holding it in position until they actually sink it. Top-right picture demonstrates the process of filling the pipe, and how, as they put water in it and pull out the air, it will slowly sink, nice controlled, submerged, and rest nicely on the bottom of the ocean. This, the, the sinking process is very critical, dependent on the tides and currents, and so they are looking at, they have three different windows that the contractor's looking at, at, for the right, ideal conditions for sinking this pipe, in the bottom right, just an example of kind of how they analyze the, the current tide conditions and determine when the best time to do it is. And of that, once, once the pipe's in place, that'll be it for the marine portion of construction, and hopefully that will happen by September, we hope that that part done. The other piece of the project that is currently happening is we're preparing for the blasting that will eventually take place. The picture here on the right kind of shows where, that's the blasting area, where we'll actually need to blast to create room for the pipe alignment. Everyone in, within 200 feet of the pipeline should be registered and active as, for our ongoing pre-blast surveys, so we'll do pre-blast and post-blast surveys to ensure that no damage was caused to any residents nearby. Anyone that's in the area that hasn't gotten contacted about this is, we, we recommend that you contact the city, and, and if you feel you need it, get on the list, and we'll, we'll accommodate you, but it's highly recommended for anyone in the area, I believe everyone in the immediate vicinity is already registered as part of it. And just to address any concerns, we have very experienced blast consultants as part of this project, and each blast is independently designed, and they collect data and analyze it, and they design every successive blast for those conditions based on previous blasts, so we expect a very underwhelming blasting, and just to, we, everything is done to ensure safety and minimal impact to the residents. Down on the bottom there is just, is a good diagram of why we need to blast, we, the pipe alignment in that area on U Avenue and Third Street gets very deep, and there's a lot of bedrock that needs to be moved so that we can route our pipe properly.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, could you go back one slide? Thanks. What are the green highlighted land parcels? Does that mean anything?
I know for sure one of them is our, one of our, we have a citizen resident who is majorly impacted, and we are relocating, and that would be the one, I believe, on the northern one. The other two, I'm not sure, I can, I'd have to get back to you, I, this is, I pulled this out of the blasting, master blasting plan, as just, as a good example of, of what that area is, so it might be an outdated diagram in that way, but it's just, I don't have the full background on it.
Okay, thanks.
It's more for, just for reference.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So I think I heard maybe two conflicting things here, did you say that everybody within the area eligible for pre-blast surveys is on the list, or did I hear you say that we need additional outreach to get them on the list?
No, I, I believe everyone has been contacted within the 200-foot radius, and
Contacted?
Yes.
But on the list?
I would have to, I would have to check, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I, I believe when I last looked at it, I didn't check every property, but it appeared that every property was flagged, our consultants doing that work, so they would have the latest and greatest information, so I could verify that for you.
I, I had heard from one resident that the surveying company, I think, showed up, and they were kind of like, well, who, who are you, you know, because there weren't people with City Anacortes logos and that kind of thing. I'm a little nervous about how, how well that is, that is working, I just looked for confirmation that every one of those properties has either gotten their pre-blast surveyors on the list to get their pre-blast survey, or they've affirmatively turned it down, rather than just go-away solicitor. That we've actually done the right job of, of reaching out and making people feel like this is a thing you might really want.
Yeah, I mean, we, at the 200-foot radius, it was basically an opt-out scenario, we, I believe that we contacted all of them, and they were automatically opted in for the survey, because it's, we highly recommend it, and then anyone outside that radius was offered the opportunity to, as more of an option.
Anyone outside the radius as well, was, was offered?
I mean, any, anyone that wants it, that's in the immediate vicinity, can, can contact us, and we can, we, we can work with them, so anyone, it's open to anyone that feels that they want it, it's just, it's a
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's open for whoever feels
I'm, I'm just hoping that we don't have anybody that says, well, I did want it, but I didn't understand what was being offered at the time.
Or, or worse, we didn't know what was going on.
Well, yeah, at this point, I, I really hope that everyone knows what's going on, we've done, I feel a lot to inform the public, especially in that area, so I, I, I really hope that everyone does know that lives in that area.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just had a quick question, I've, I've been on the website, kind of just checking progress and seeing all what's going on, and I noticed that we have a construction schedule posted on here that's dated 6/27/2024. Is that the most current one, the most accurate one, or? I don't know if they, like, I would assume with a project like this, things could change quite a bit, within like, a month's time, and I'm just
I believe that's the most recent published one by the contractor, but things are, as you said, very tentative and very up in the air, and, and things have changed significantly since then, as far as timelines go, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of coordination, the main focus right now is getting the pipe in the water, the rest of it is very up, up in the air, in terms of scheduling, the contractor and, and our consultants are still working on what the rest of the project will look like.
So, and as that would change, obviously, we're gonna give plenty of notice for major things that would be happening, or, and that'll get updated, or how does that, like, if there's a change, how does that?
So that, this was the final slide I had here, is
Sorry.
We got close.
Head of the game, yeah. So yeah, I just encourage everyone to keep, on the city website, you can sign up for notifications specifically for this project, for, that'll buzz your phone or email, and you can specifically sign up for this project to get additional notifications anytime that we update the website, which I do that as much as possible. Our project manager is Jeff Beltramini, he's been doing an amazing job on this project, and we're really happy to have him. And then we have some tentative, a very tentative timeline of just what is projected to be the main milestones of this project that people might be concerned about, the, the marine work, we're hoping will be done in September, and then where it's, tentatively, the blasting will start sometime around the end of the year, with the project completion in early summer of 2025. Mayor Miller, that's all I have.
Mr. Walters.
I, I think it's worthwhile to keep in mind that people have had, especially the blasting, built up in their minds as to what it's going to be like, you say it's maybe even overselling it, that'd be, I think, great, but I think that there's likely a lot of anxiety among the neighborhood about what's happening, when's, when's that happening, and even if we have no news to provide to the neighborhood, I think it's worthwhile to reach out, to say we have no news, that things are still on course, we don't know when, say, blasting is gonna happen, to reassure the neighborhood that they are at least subscribed to the right channel to get that information, and to know that you are communicating with them, even if that communication is just, hold tight, we don't have additional news. I think that's important, especially for this project, and especially given the potential scale of the impacts, even if we think now that the impacts are gonna be limited.
Yeah, we could do regular updates, even if there isn't anything significant to say, just to make sure that everyone knows that they're not, we're not forgetting to update them.
And for instance, like, we approved the noise variance for August, you may not know precisely when that's happening, but you could still communicate that sometime in August this is gonna happen, I, I certainly understand that every time you communicate, that might invite more communication back, and that could consume time, but I kind of think that's just how it is. I, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the park, because I don't think we've really heard much about that lately.
I don't have the, the best information on the park at this time, I could, I could bring that back to you if you want more information, but I, I would have to check with our, Jeff is also a project manager for that project, and I have to confer with him to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn, so
Sure.
It's not something I'm fully caught up to speed on.
Sure.
All right, I know it wasn't an asterisk item, but there might be somebody who lives in that neighborhood that might want to ask any questions. Yeah, that, that was my guess, come on up. And you, I think you know the drill, but your name and where you live.
Okay, John Wilkinson, Cap Sandy, part of Anacortes. Yeah, I appreciate the review, and it's my intended, but I think there still is a communication challenge, because, well, I know for one, a year and a half ago, I was assured that we would be eligible for a pre-blast survey, and I checked about six months ago, not gotten a reply, and haven't heard anything about it.
Would you speak just a little closer?
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to be able to hear.
So I, I think need to close the loop on these pre-blast surveys, because I know another neighbor is very anxious about it, and was talking about hiring his own consultant, and, you know, you want to stay away from the distrust lawsuit sort of realm of things, because there is a lot of anxiety about blasting. And then, point was made about the June schedule, and it's, it's quite different than shown tonight. And then, point was made about the June schedule, and it's quite different than shown tonight. And, you know, neighbor that is going to have to move was told he was going to have to leave November and December. So lots of confusion, and, you know, I don't know how best to break through that barrier, but just ask the staff or the consultants to really figure out how to make that website work. So appreciate, and even a review like this, I don't know whether that should be posted on the website or whatever, but lots of work, and appreciate everybody's efforts, but let's keep hammering on it.
No, and it's fair to keep hammering on that, because obviously we want to be as transparent as possible, but as we just, you know, executed the laydown and kind of getting a plan together, the dates will, the dates will come as we get closer, and we want to provide the best information out there. And I always say, we'd like to provide dates to deviate from, I think that's helpful, even if they're not correct, but obviously on a major project like this, there's going to be some changes. So, Mr. Lee, I think you wanted to.
I just wanted to add about, as far as the schedule goes, from the original schedule, the means and methods and how the contractor is going to build the project is up to them, and so they usually come with a preliminary plan, but as the project on, goes on, a lot of that is very tentative and changes a lot depending on how they want to approach the project, and it really is up to the contractor, and there's been a lot of back and forth between our consultant, HDR, who's managing the construction, and the contractor on how best to proceed with the project. The contractor's also open to different requests to see if they can possibly build it in a different way than originally proposed, and so there's just been a lot of back and forth there. The main focus right now is the marine portion, and the rest of it, we'll have, as we go forward, we'll have a better outlook on when those specific dates will be.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So also on the website, regardless of what the contractor changes the schedule and whatnot, it does say that the blasting schedule and notification process will be posted on this page at least three weeks prior. So we'll definitely, no matter when that blasting is happening, we will definitely have three weeks' notice.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. How many houses or how many households do we think are affected by this that are within that radius of the 200 feet of the blast zone?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's a handful.
Okay, so here it says, residents within that zone who've reached out to Jordan Wyden or via email, Strider Construction staff will begin knocking on doors. So it does seem like there are some, and this is a lot to coordinate, understandably, and I think you guys are doing a really good job. This obviously is as crucial a piece as any, so if there are a handful of homes, I would, it's not my job to tell staff what to do, certainly, but I would think it would be very well-received if City Anacortes staff, like, personally went and knocked on those doors and had something to hand them as well, and say, hey, this is what's happening, especially since it's not a whole lot of homes. I think that would go a long way to allaying some fears.
We can do that.
All right. Any other questions? It's a big project, a lot of money, and it's been a long time coming, so we're excited we're getting, we're moving forward on it. All right, anything else? Mr. Walters.
Will you let us know when the sinking?
Yeah, yes, we know, we know, we will make sure.
One, I'll be present for the sinking.
Yeah, that, it will definitely be updated on the website, for sure, when that happens.
Quite an event. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee, and being no further business for the council, I will adjourn to tonight's meeting. Thank you.